School committee meeting to order, please. This meeting is being recorded by the PBTO school committee's recording secretary, Leanna Harris. The matters listed below are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Would you like to -- I'd like to stand for a moment. Silence, please. Thank you. And there's nobody here for the pledge of allegiance?
No.
Nope. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Onto the agenda. Approval of minutes.
Motion to receive and approve.
Second by Mr. Amico on the motion. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Anodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Approval of bills?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 3852, dated June 26th, in the amount of $44,533.59, subject to audit.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Anodes?
Yes. Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 3854, dated June 21st, 2018, in the amount of $467,271.53, subject to audit.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Anodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 3854, dated June 21st, 2018, in the amount of $467,271.53, subject to audit.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Anodes?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Really had to think about it.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Continued business. Ms. Dunn, Higgins Project?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had our regularly scheduled Higgins School Building Committee meeting last Thursday and actually recessed it to continue it to this Thursday. Biggest topic that we really wanted to tackle in one full meeting will take place this Thursday. We're going to be discussing landscaping. So we're going to get an update on all of landscaping on the site, including the fields. What we're working on is we want to review the mowing schedule and we also need to make sure that we have dates definite on presently. We do not have control over the responsibilities, actually, over the fields because that is under the subcontractor. Once they complete their portion of the contract, then it would be turned over to us. So we want to make sure that that handoff is properly done, that all of the work leading up to that is done because we're really at the mercy of the weather. So you have to follow through on your growth and mowing and there are several things that are going to be addressed. The grass around the field, we have to clarify when that's going to be mowed. Out front, it actually is looking a little bit better, but we have some trees that need to be replaced. They didn't make it through the winter, which is anticipated, and we want to find out about how those will be replaced and what the care will be for them. And the meeting will take place here at the Higgins at 3:45 this Thursday. Again, those are open meetings and everyone's welcome to attend.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dunn, for that report. Okay. On continued business, I'm happy to report on behalf of everyone that the city council approved our budget last Tuesday, June 19th, and thank you, Dr. Levine and Ms. Murtagh and Mr. Stanton, along with the mayor, that did an excellent job with the presentation with the city council and I think everything went smooth and that's a big hurdle to overcome there. All right. Next on continued business is school start times. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. At the last meeting, I think Ms. Carpenter had made the recommendation that we start preparing for some surveys in preparation for the beginning of the next school year, the 18-19 school year. I was provided with some surveys that came from Dr. Owens, Judith Owens, who presented them to the superintendent's office and they were passed along to me. So I have some template surveys that perhaps we could take into Ms. Carpenter's subcommittee and tweak. I think they need some tweaking. I'm happy to share them and then we can develop perhaps surveys or a survey or I think there should be a parent survey, a student survey. We've already had a staff survey and then be able to roll them out in September when school resumes.
Through the chair to Mr. Hockman, to the whole committee, are those the surveys? We all got them, right? Is that the one that Dr. Owens? Did we all get those? Did you guys all? Because I got them too. Did you get them?
Through the chair. The same Dr. Owens had sent some surveys to our office, which I think I shared with the committee some months ago after she made her presentation. These are probably either similar, the same, or maybe in addition to.
Okay. So I would just ask that maybe we distribute them to the committee and then put them on the next agenda so people have time to share their suggestions and then compile it from there.
Mr. Hockman?
Yeah. Frankly, I was thinking that perhaps the subcommittee go through the surveys and come out with a recommendation and then so that we can have a final product at the next meeting.
I'm fine either way.
Either, yeah.
Doesn't matter. It's fine.
Is there a will through the chair?
That's fine.
Well, Ms. Carpenter is the chairwoman. I'll leave it up to her to make the decision, but in any event, we're moving it further. We're moving it along in the process that was agreed upon in our last meeting and at the next meeting, in the July meeting, I think we might, hopefully we have an opportunity to present final surveys that would be available in September for distribution.
I am just concerned because I think I'm a committee of two right now, so I probably would like some of the other committee members' input on the survey.
Oh, we won't be quiet. You know that.
I know you won't. So if we could distribute it to everyone and then have some recommendations because it's just, it's me and Dr. Levine and now he, so it's just me. So.
I'm there with you, Ms. Carpenter.
Okay.
But, yeah, we could distribute it to everyone and perhaps.
Compile any changes.
Yeah. Okay.
Can you email that out?
Yeah.
Again?
Through the chair, I shall, to everybody, and I'll be happy to help on this if asked.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman, for that report. Public participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to say a few words? Superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I would ask for a motion to receive $500 from Stadium Oil for Democracy in Action and a hundred, well, one at a time, and $100 from Fred Murtagh for Democracy in Action with gratitude.
Motion to receive with gratitude.
All in favor?
Okay. Thank you. I would ask for a motion from the school committee to approve the recommendation of the athletic director, which I have also approved. In order for us to keep our wrestling program going, we have, the athletic director, Mr. Buah, has worked out a collaboration with Saugus. Since Saugus will have nearly double the kids that PBTO will have on that team, I believe it's 14 and 7, Saugus would be the home team, but I think it's important to keep this program going and I would ask for a motion to that effect and Mr. Buah is here to answer any questions if you need to ask them.
Ms. Carpenter?
Thank you. So for clarification, we're co-op-ing with Saugus and they're going to be the host team and transportation and all of those type of things will be provided. Do our students have to go over to Saugus High? Like, how does the logistics work out for them?
Yeah.
Welcome, Mr. Buah. Thank you for coming tonight.
No, thank you. So as of right now, I haven't worked a piece of transportation out. I know with the co-ops we host, it's up to the individual player to get to practices as they would if any other team. So that piece of it hasn't been worked out at this point.
But we'll, I guess, may I follow up? So if we're co-op-ing and Saugus is going to be the home team, I would assume that we're going to take responsibility for getting our kids to Saugus? Is, they would practice together, right?
Correct.
And they would practice at Saugus?
Yes.
Would we be transporting those kids? I guess that's the question.
I haven't looked into that piece because I know with, at least the ones we've hosted, other schools have, it's been up to the individual player to get to the practices.
From, oh, okay.
From their, from their schools to, from their homes, whether it's swimming or our girls' ice hockey, it's always kind of been up to the individual families to get their players there.
Okay. Thank you.
But when they have a game, they would, not a game, a match, they would go to Saugus High and then from Saugus High, the bus takes them to wherever the match is if it's away from Saugus High?
Correct.
So Saugus would be responsible for, but they would go back to Saugus High, right?
Correct. Yes. And we've, part of our discussion we've worked out is, you know, splitting home meets. So we would host some meets at PBTO High School as well as having some meets at Saugus High School. So our kids still feel like it's part of their program as well.
Great.
Oh, that's good. Okay.
Ms. Dunn?
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Buah. Are there any costs involved in this arrangement? Do we have any financial obligations to Saugus for coaches or?
The discussions I've had up to this point would, we would retain our coach, they would hire a coach as well, so we would each kind of be paying a coach and then splitting, you know, generally splitting transportation costs. Again, we haven't worked out those final details. I was waiting for approval before kind of working out all those things, but that's kind of the initial discussions I've had with the athletic director of Saugus High School.
So through the chair, there wouldn't be any added cost that we presently have now?
No.
Okay.
Not that I can foresee.
I, for one, I think it's great. Anytime we can keep any of the athletics going, and we've had to do it before with co-ops and middle school waivers and those type of things, I'm always in favor because you can build it up and keep the program going because once you lose them, it's hard to get it back. So I'm definitely in favor of this.
Thank you.
Very good. Make a motion to follow the recommendation of the athletic director.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Anodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
I do have, I do have one point I'd like to make. For many of our athletes, one of the issues for some of our teams, and I know that they're the teams that seem to be growing smaller, one that I can think of is swimming. A difficulty for many of our students, participate in sports where the practice does not take place at the high school, transportation to those practices is keeping students off of the team and it really is an issue for many students. By the time they're a senior, they will carpool or they may have their, you know, their own transportation to get there, but for the freshmen and sophomores and juniors as well, it's a difficulty and I think we need to look at that because we're not able to grow these teams because you have to have the younger students with an ability to participate and they can't. So please keep that in mind. I don't know, I don't know the circumstances with wrestling, but I also know already, hearing that the students are going to have to arrange their own transportation, that that will probably impact some of the PBTO students, especially if they're younger. And would they be freshmen and sophomores going to that team or is it just varsity?
Right. We only have varsity numbers right now. I believe we have two returning freshmen and then everyone else, I believe, is one sophomore and I think three or four juniors are going to become seniors.
And I can tell you that the worry of a parent would be sending a freshman down route one in a car with a junior or senior and it's a legitimate worry. So please, if you have any data that would support or negate that, it would be great if we could have that and always think about that. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Great point, Ms. Dunn. Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Hockman?
Just because it was brought up, I agree that there's concerns about transportation and I think that those concerns about transportation extend beyond athletics. You just happened to be here, Mr. Buah, and we're talking about athletics and there is always a concern when there's a student who's not able to get to an athletic event, a practice or school, when, with a bus or with a parent that's able to drive him. So I would, I'm happy to have the conversation about transportation, but I think we should, it should be an all-encompassing conversation, not just simply through this cooperative program or other programs for students who are traveling, whether it be to the Y for swim practice or other events.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Buah.
Thank you, Mr. Buah.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next issue on my agenda is special ed restructuring at the high school. I would ask you to receive two job descriptions that we did not have a chance to put in your packets. I would ask you to read through them and get any questions to Ms. Murtagh regarding these recommended job descriptions.
Motion to receive.
Second. That's the second one.
So one of the areas that would be in need of support over the next few years is special education at the high school. We do intend to implement co-teaching. We do think that we need a restructured look at how the special ed department at the high school is administered. We are recommending the creation of an administrative job that would be responsible for evaluation, curriculum, instruction, and day-to-day supervision of that program at the high school. That is one of the job descriptions that you have. We also have been cited by state reports for not having an identifiable person in charge of a transition program for special ed students who are in the 18 to 22-year-old age group who need transition services. We have, we have had some transition services, but we have not had a person designated to do those transition services. So you have both job descriptions there and because of some restructuring that both Mrs. Grooby and Superintendent Murtagh will be able to explain, the cost we project at all of these moves to be about $40,000 to $45,000. We feel that that is a, an investment that needs to be made at this time. We cannot continue to do the same old, same old and expect different results. We have wonderful people who are working very hard, but we haven't had the results that we need and we want. So we would ask you to take a look at that. We're not asking for a vote tonight, but Ms. Murtagh will be asking for a vote in the July meeting. I'll stop there for any questions that you might have before I move on to the next issue.
No?
I'll get back to the spring athletic award recipients. I did want to talk about Faith Christian Academy. It's taken me quite a while to try to understand what it is that our responsibility is as a school district. Thank you, Ruthie. The, we do have a private faith-based school that has opened in PBTO. It has a similar school in Salem, in Lynn, I'm sorry. I had to check a number of different sources to find out what the responsibility is and whose responsibility it is to approve this school. And I now know with stuff that I sent you that has a lot of questions and answers, that it is strictly the school committee's responsibility to approve the school, that we do have a policy on how to go about approving that and it's basically the superintendent's responsibility to do the research for you. We have done that research. We have looked at their test results. We have looked at their curriculum. We have looked at, we have visited twice. I know that Ms. Murtagh intends to visit once more. We have done all the things that both policy and state law says that we have to do. There was some confusion in my mind as to whether or not we then, you're simply voting to approve and then it goes to the State Department for further approval? That is not the case. The State Department, actually, the Department of Education, has absolutely no authority here. This is strictly a local school committee responsibility. The only responsibility after you take a vote, and I'm not asking for a vote tonight, but Ms. Murtagh will in July, is to notify the State Department that you have taken a vote and what that vote was. What you would be certifying by taking a vote according to the law is that the curriculum, the instruction, the building is safe and that all things are basically equal to what is provided in the public schools. I'm not ready to ask you to take that vote tonight. We want to do one more run-through of the paperwork that we have, which is the folder that we've gone through, and I know that Ms. Murtagh wants to take one more look at the school facility itself, but it is likely that Ms. Murtagh will be recommending to you that you approve this private faith-based school. The law is pretty clear. It says that you will not withhold approval without reason and at this point, we feel there will be no reason, but we want to do our due diligence and do just a little bit more research and Ms. Murtagh will be bringing this vote to you in July. Are there any questions on that?
Ms. Carpenter?
What are the grades of this school?
Right now, it's K through 7, but they are approved K through 12. They, I mean, they are establishing a K through 12 school.
And it's, where is it?
Yeah. It's on, off of Pulaski. You take a left at that big building that houses a whole number of different companies. It's kind of in the middle of Pulaski Street. It's in the back.
Oh, okay. So you're going to bring this up again for more information? Okay. I'll hold.
And if you have any questions on this, I did send you a, some material by email that I forwarded you, a whole bunch of questions and answers, so that you can take a look at them and see if there's anything that you want to bring up to Ms. Murtagh the night of the vote or in, even before the vote, just get the questions to Ms. Murtagh so that we can get you the answers. All right?
Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. If you've sent though some material on this, I don't believe I've received it, so can you please resend it, including the statute?
Yeah. Did anybody get that material? We'll make sure.
I didn't get it.
No? Okay. Well, I'll make sure it's sent to you tomorrow.
Thank you. When you can. And, but I don't know if you had the statute included.
We do.
Yeah. Because this sounds, are you saying that we have authority to approve or disapprove of religious-based schools in PBTO?
Yeah. According to Chapter 76, Section 1, which really deals mostly with mandatory attendance, there is a section in there that deals with private school approval by the local school committee. We also have an advisory that was updated in 2007 from the Mass Association of School Committees that has questions and answers that suggests that there is absolutely no State Department of Education oversight regarding your vote.
Through the chair, to Dr. Levine or whomever, is this oversight strictly for religious-based day schools? I mean, we don't have oversight over CCD, for example.
No, no, no. It's, this is a, it's, the key word is private school and it happens to be faith-based.
So we have oversight over St. John the Baptist?
I don't think so. I think that's part of the, part of the archdiocese. So that's a whole different set of rules and regulations.
There's a lot of hairs. It looks like we're going to split here, but I'm uncomfortable with the whole subject, but we'll get the material and we'll see what it says.
Every time I was going to bring this to you, I had other questions pop up and I'm uncomfortable myself, but it looks like with the advisory that we have from MASC, which I will send you, Chapter 76, Section 1, from the Mass General Laws, it does look like you are the final say on whether or not to approve this school. Mr. Amico?
Yep. Mr. Amico?
Excuse me. Could we also just get this sent over to our legal counsel for their approval or their look into it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. Through the chair.
One other question. Do they currently have students? I mean, how long have they been operating?
I don't know the answer to that. I think this is their first year, but they have 12 students.
Okay.
Because they were in Lynn.
They were, yeah.
Yeah. They're established in Lynn.
In Lynn.
Yep. In uniforms.
I'm confused as well that, that whole separate church from state type of thing, right?
Freedom of religion without interference.
Mr. Hockman?
Yeah. Anyway, through, did Lynn, the Lynn School Committee?
Yes. They voted it and we have, actually, I don't have copies of this letter, but this is the letter that went to whom it may concern. This is from, I don't know who this actually went to. It just reads as follows. "This letter is to inform you that on the 14th regular meeting of the Lynn School Committee on September 24th, 2015, the Lynn School Committee approved by unanimous votes required by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 76, Section 1, to support something that I have not seen, the following." I don't know what this means and this is why I never, I haven't brought it forward to you until I got clarification. Something called the Application for Child Care Licensing Exemption for the Faith Christian Academy of Lynn. I now assume that this is a waiver, when you approve it as a school, that substitutes as any Department of Education early childhood or other licensing that they don't now need to meet. They don't need MCAS exams. They don't need to be licensed by the Department of Education. That's what I'm assuming that means. "The school committee meeting in an effort to inform the Lynn School Committee, I presented Faith Christian Academy's curriculum, scope, sequence, training certificates, proof of student standardized tests, et cetera, which we have reviewed. I have visited and observed the school during the school day and have personally met with the school's directors, which we have already done," and it's signed by the superintendent of the school. So I will get you all the information.
It'd be an interesting July meeting.
Yeah. Look forward to that. Mr. Anodes.
What'd you say, Shades? Mr. Anodes?
It's Dr. Shades.
Through you. Are these folks going to come here in July to see us?
If you request.
Seems like we have a pretty big responsibility on our hands in that case then.
Yeah. I mean, if you so request through the chair, so request of the superintendent.
I'll make that request. I mean, the more information we can get, the better as far as I'm concerned.
If that's in the form of a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Second.
Roll call vote? Is there a motion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Anodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Yes.
None of this is real. I'm just trying to aggrate you before I go.
I was going to say, I'm waiting for the, waiting for the punchline.
Ms. Murtagh, if you would talk a little bit about the PVTO program.
Yes, the PVTO is coming back this summer. We, Nick Blaisdell, who has now graduated from University of Massachusetts Amherst, is coming back to lead that again. I met with the 25 tutors right now and there's more coming. We have 96 students signed up already and they're going to do July 9th to August 2nd and individual tutoring and small group tutoring. Very excited about this opportunity again. It will be held here at the Higgins and like I said, it will begin on July 9th.
Any questions on that?
Not so much a question.
Ms. Dunn?
Just to let you know, Nick Blaisdell graduated a year early.
Wow.
With honors, top of his class.
Great.[1741.12]
We have 96 students signed up already, and they're going to do July 9th to August 2nd, and individual tutoring and small group tutoring. Very excited about this opportunity again. It will be held here at the Higgins, and like I said, it will begin on July 9th.
Any questions on that?
Not so much a question.
Ms. Dunn?
Just to let you know, Nick Blaisdell graduated a year early.
Wow.
With honors, top of his class.
Great. Mr. Amico?
Thank you, through the chair to Ms. Murtagh. Can other students sign up? Is there a process that more students can sign up? Need be?
Yes, thank you for asking, Mr. Amico. Yes, it's all online. It's on the PBD Public Schools website, and then you click on another link to Nick Blaisdell's, and it formulates.
Okay.
So you can sign up right online.
It's free of charge.
Free of charge, yes.
Great, thank you.
And, thank you.
Thank you.
I am recommending, as is my responsibility, as directed by the school committee, to extend the MOA for four kids only to, through the year 2021 with the same annual review. This organization has done nothing but add tremendous benefit to us. They run a very complicated and challenging program that is of great worth, both academically and physically and socially throughout our school system. They graciously agreed to keep the before, before-the-bell programs open, even though they were losing money, for the second year at my request, to see whether or not, in the second year, if their numbers would grow, and they indeed did. We, it's a very healthy program. I am so recommending that we extend the contract through 2021. You don't have to extend it, this is an annual review, but I think renewing this as a three-year contract is in the benefit, advantage for the school system.
Motion followed recommendation of the superintendent.
Second on the motion.
Mr. Hockman on the motion?
Yes. Through you to Dr. Levine. We periodically receive reports from you with regard to enrollment in this. What I agree with you is a wonderfully terrific program that enhances and enriches our students, it provides support for staff and parents, and does so many wonderful things. And in those reports that you give us, you give us enrollment figures. Is there ever a time where you exercise our contractual right under Paragraph 3J where you calculate the pupil, the per day, the pupil per day that attends this program in terms of calculating the cost that we charge FKO for using our facilities?
May I, through the chair? Through the chair, I have not done that. I've been very, more than satisfied with what they pay us. I will tell you that if we weren't in such a bad year this year, budget year, I was going to recommend that over a period of time, that the $60,000 that they pay per year, or whatever it is, 66, that over a full-year period, I would like to see that reduced by $15,000 a year, they will put it right back into the program. They have hired additional staff for us in the past. I believe that we should follow the lead of other cities and towns, other cities that FKO is in, that actually does not charge them any money and has them put that money that would have come in the form of money to us, back into the program for kids. I am not making that recommendation this year because of the finances and the very difficult budget year that we have, but I believe it's something the school committee should consider in the future.
Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Dr. Levine. And with that, I, one of the problems I had with this contract when we initially adopted it was this provision of counting children that attend the program per day and extrapolating some sort of cost to FKO for that. We had, in the contract that we're, looks like we're going to renew, or memorandum of understanding, whatever we call it, we had dramatically increased, not following what you're saying, but dramatically increased the amount of money that was charged to FKO for utilizing our facilities. I think prior to this, it was around 30 or $35,000, and it increased to $66,000. But we kept the language in there about the, actually, there were some discrepancies over the language in the past, whether it was a child per day or children of one family per day, and it actually led to a lot of controversy with the former superintendent. So I'd like to see that language stricken and just simply keep, if your recommendation at this point with our budgetary situation is to keep the $66,000 as a, as a fee or rent or whatever we call it, I just hate that this language is in here, and I think it leads to future problems. At some point, someone on the committee may ask Ms. Murtagh, if she's the superintendent, to do this calculation, and it's a horribly tricky calculation, because most students that I know of, including my own, that attend FKO don't necessarily attend the same number of days each week or the same number of weeks each month. It's a, it's a need-based program that assists a lot of families, and I just hate to see any future, I don't know, I don't know what the right word is here, but any, any future disagreements or controversy over this particular language.
Through the chair?
Yep.
So, if you remember, and I'm sure that you all do, when I, I think when I came here in 2011, there was a little bit of anxiety around the program for a number of reasons. I think I wanted to take a hard look at, at what had been told to me by working with this group, and I had a chance to do that now over four years. I'm satisfied that they're honorable, that they work hard, that they provide us with tremendous skills and supervision. They work with our teachers, our guidance counselors, and our school adjustment counselors to provide strong academics and mental health provisions for us, and they have hired people at their cost in order to supplement the staff that they have. I think that they are a good, really good partner. This is totally up to you as a school committee to vote the language of the contract, the MOA, and if, you know, we don't need a vote tonight, you could take a look at it and at, at Mr. Hockman's recommendation. But I do strongly ask you to consider eventually wiping out even the $66,000, and maybe you want to put language in there that that money goes back into the program. I'd much rather see that happen. The numbers are healthy. They have just written another grant for a third school, which I think that we stand a very good chance of getting. We need a signature on that grant proposal tonight from the mayor, who's not here, so I would ask Mr. Olympio to sign that for the school committee tonight. It's another 21st century grant. It's hundreds of thousands of dollars. It will provide continual support at a new school, which I believe is going to be the center, the Carroll, the Carroll School this time. That'll be three schools, and, and it's, it's a wonderful opportunity for us and our kids, our neediest kids, to receive the tremendous supports that they're receiving and have been, first at the Welch, and second school at the Center, now at the Carroll. They continue to work very hard for us. So I have no problem with what Mr. Hockman just recommended. I had no inclination to go back to the per pupil figure. I think the 66 worked fine, I think everybody's comfortable with it, but I do recommend that we begin to reduce that and have them put it back into the program.
Mr. Amico, then Ms. Dunn?
Great, thank you. Through the chair to Dr. Levine, and also the committee. I'm very happy with four kids only, as a school committee member and also as a parent. Both my children have gone through the program. I would, I would also, I would vote for a contract extension as well. My only question is, are we allowed to do that without putting it out to bid? I know last time around, it was, it was a bid process, we had some groups come in. Just technicality there, I mean, I do think that the, FKO is the best at what they do in this. I mean, they're, they're in Everett, they're in Revere, they're in Chelsea, they're in Salem, they're in PBD. They really provide a, a great resource for our kids and for working parents, but I just want to make sure that we're not in violation by not putting something out to bid.
Through the chair. I think the answer to that is yes, but that's a great question. I'm going to have to ask Dan Dusset, and we'll do that tomorrow when we get an answer for you.
And again, I do, I do recommend extending it, but I just want to make sure we cover our bases.
It's a great question.
Ms. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate everything Dr. Levine said, and I agree with it. This is a wonderful program, it's helping hundreds of children. But I will say that the contract doesn't expire until next August, and coming in tonight, I was looking at this as your annual review, where you recommend that we continue on with this contract, and that it's reviewed and evaluated annually, and that this was your report. I did not anticipate voting on anything with this contract, and actually looking at the dates, I just presumed that in the next couple of months, we would start the process of evaluating this contract, getting information that each of the members may want in making the determination. So I, I am not prepared to vote tonight, I won't vote tonight. As a matter of fact, I don't think we should, because the contract is not expiring. We have a whole nother year. This, to me, was your annual review.
So I think that's a really good point through the chair, and it might be cleaner to do it that way, just vote to, to continue the contract the way it's written for one more year, and then that gives you the opportunity to go out to bid at the end of the contract if we need to do that.
Ms. Dunn?
I don't think we have to vote to continue it.
Actually, you're right, it's, because it's already in force.
It's already in place, right.
Okay. So I do think that you needed a recommendation from me. I give my recommendation to continue the contract the way it's written.
So I withdraw my motion, and this is information only, and here we go.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
Great discussion, though.
It was informative, as it should have been.
I just wanted to clarify that, that we're not saying no to FKO, we are saying that we have a contract for one year, and, you know, we'll, we'll continue this, and if we have to put it out to bid, we will. If not, I'm ready to extend it, but we can't at this point. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Mr. Amico.
Point of information, I believe it says we have to make those decisions by April 30th annually, so we're good.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Just a, in your packet, you have the new mission statement and vision of the graduate. I do want you to know that a lot of people worked very, very hard on this at the high school. It was coordinated by a number of people, Jared Haas being one of them, the high school principal being another, Charlie Sharette helped out a great deal. This takes a lot of work to meet the standards that are expected in the NIESC evaluation. This mission and vision of the graduate is good work by good people, hard-working people, and I wanted to thank them publicly, including the staff members that, who I don't know particularly by name, but the staff members that worked on this committee. Thank you so much for the hard work that you gave us. This communication from Pathways Head Start, we just don't have room for them at the Welch anymore, as we are going to need another classroom for fifth grade. They have been wonderful partners, wonderful tenants. They have found a place over in Salem. They would prefer to come back to PBD at some point, and if we can accommodate, I would recommend that we accommodate. Many of the kids in the program are PBD kids. Before we get to the school committee and the recommendation that you adopt a meeting schedule for next year, I would like to just read to you the spring awards from our sports program. In baseball, Jake Guston was the co-MVP of the NEC, and he was NEC All-Conference. Eric DeMayo was the NEC All-Conference, as was Eddie Campbell and Alex D'Angelo. Boys track, were NEC North Champions and NEC Meet Champions. Shane Braz was the two-mile NEC All-Conference Champion. Connor Ramos, in the Discus, was NEC All-Conference. Dariel Canela was NEC All-Conference Javelin. Mark Albrun, 800, in the 800 NEC All-Conference, Claudio Roca. One-mile NEC All-Conference, Bill Elwood, William Elwood. One-mile NEC All-Conference, Kevin Aroki, NEC All-Star. Cameron Powers, NEC All-Star, and Edgar DeSantos, NEC All-Star. In girls track, Jolene Murphy, 100 NEC, in the 100 NEC All-Conference, Division One State Champion. Congratulations to Jolene. Lexi Betancourt, NEC All-Star, and Lilly Brennan, NEC All-Star. In the girls tennis, they were NEC Champions. Lorraine Benoit was NEC Coach of the Year. Congratulations, Coach Benoit. Shailene Kelly, NEC All-Star, and Angela Farrar, NEC All-Star. Boys tennis, Paul Neal, NEC All-Conference, NEC MVP. Congratulations, Paul. Alex Nado, who was a Danvers High School student in our co-op, was an NEC All-Conference, and Mask Leet, also from Danvers, NEC All-Star. Girls lacrosse, Olivia, I'm sorry, I'm going to mess up this name, Karakopals, NEC All-Conference, Katherine Manning, NEC All-Star, and Colleen Cruddy, NEC All-Star. Boys lacrosse, Tony O'Donnell, Bruce Lurch, Men of the Year Award. Congratulations, Coach O'Donnell. Stephen L., NEC All-Conference. Colby Theryan, NEC All-Conference. Andrew Lucas, NEC All-Star. Jack Holden, NEC All-Star. John Najer, NEC All-Star. And Austin Leggett, NEC All-Star. And in softball, we were co-NEC Champions, and Coach Butch Malimpy was Salem News Coach of the Year. Congratulations, Coach. Tiana Daw, NEC All-Conference, and NEC MVP. Congratulations, Tiana. Luciana Mestramatello, NEC All-Conference. Christina Rosenial, NEC All-Star. Mallory LeBlanc, NEC All-Star. And Sidney Lowry, NEC All-Star. Just tremendous, broad offering in our sports program of many different sports, both boys and girls, and we all, they always do us proud. Congratulations to all of our athletes. Thank you.
Very impressive.
Lastly, again, some of the things that I strive to get to before I leave are late into your packet. I just completed a summary for you of the 2000 district review done by the State Department of Education. Attached is my executive summary and the entire report. This is a, a good template for us to follow to improve in a number of areas. We have received a number of plaudits as well, one of which goes to you as a school committee at the expense of my friend watching the school committee meeting out there who accused me of backslapping, I'm sure he's not watching. The backslapping is, is done by the State Department of Education for the wonderful work that you do as a school committee, your effectiveness, your efficiency, and the relationships that you've established with your superintendent and central office staff, and the community, the greater community, and particularly the city side, both city council and the mayor, to make this work, and it's noted in here, and, and congratulations to you. So I'm going to pass this out, I would ask you to receive it.
Motion received.
And lastly, you know that last year, I wrote a letter to the governor, asking that he declined to sign Representative Hadad's proposal to remove hiring, firing, disciplinary action, et cetera, from the Ed Reform Act language of principals and superintendents. Once again, she has submitted a proposal, it's, it's a little different this year, it's just a guarantee that we will not violate collective bargaining agreements. The governor, in his good sense, sent it back unsigned and suggested some language that actually keeps very much within the guidelines of the Ed Reform Act of 1993. We shouldn't be violating law. If law needs to be changed, change it. But while it's law, we shouldn't be circumventing it. So I'm going to pass out to you this, this bill. I'm very happy with the governor's response. I do not believe that the Ed Reform language is in any danger based upon what this bill is.
Motion received.
Are we getting homework?
Absolutely.
Thank you for the summer reading. That's what I should.
He's cleaning it off his desk and mailing it all to us.
With that, Mr. Chair, I am done.
The calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry, the school committee calendar.
Thank you.
Yeah, school committee calendar.
Through the chair. I'd like to open that up on the calendar. Looks like we should have a meeting in July, possibly either the 17th or the 31st. Looks like we should have a meeting in July, possibly either the 17th or the 31st. One or the other.
I'm fine with either of those.
I believe that your superintendent will not be here on the 31st, so I would recommend the 17th.
Mr. Hockman?
I'm all for the 17th as well. I'm out of town the 24th also. And I would ask, and the August meeting is before school starts, so it's a little more difficult, but I would be out of town August 28th, but I'm probably also out of town the 21st, and the 14th might be too early. But I'll leave, I'll just throw it out there that I wouldn't be available, August 21 or 28.
Through the chair. August 14th would actually be okay. It would be a month, basically, from the 17th, and it would allow Ms. Murtagh to update the school committee on hirings, openings, class sizes, and all the things that happen over the summer. By August 14th, we're pretty much done with move-ins and move-outs, except for some, some things that happened. So, that actually wouldn't be a bad date, I would suggest, for the school committee.
Ms. Carpenter?
I can't make that.
Except that Ms. Carpenter can't make it, so forget what I said.
And actually, too, with regards to the July meeting, we discussed something on, in safety. Will we have that information to, on July 14th?
Seventeenth.
I mean, 17th.
I will make sure.
Yeah.
It's the 17th, didn't you?
Yes.
July 17th is a Tuesday night, yes.
So, are we all in agreement on the July 17th?
I'm good.
Okay.
Bev?
I think so.
You'd rather see Brandy in August than me, so keep it, keep it the 28th.
Okay. So, okay.
I don't care. I mean, whatever's best.
I don't care either. I just won't be here. Ms. Dunn?
Bev, you pick.
Actually, I do know, in the past, we've tried to have a meeting close to the opening of the school, because it gives us a chance to hear what's happening. If I'm, if I'm correct, that's the week when the teachers will be coming back, isn't it? First day, professional development. Oh, first day, okay. So, the 28th does make good sense to have, you know, that update, and that, you know, we start off, too, with that.
I think that's historically accurate, Ms. Dunn. So, yeah, that's fine. I just want, I will be here.
You won't miss this stuff, Hockman?
Oh.
If we need one in the early August, if we have to go to the 14th, then, you know, something came up.
That's fine.
Or anything else.
Mr. Amico?
Are we able to discuss the school calendar as well? Briefly, I just, I just saw something on there. I just wanted to make sure we take care of it. Is that, is that okay, even though it's not on the agenda?
Yeah, you can do that.
It's a...
Nobody knew about it, but you can.
Because this is the meeting calendar. I just had a question about the school calendar.
May I make a recommendation through the chair that you bring that up when Mrs. Carpenter brings up the Unit A agreement?
Yes. Okay.
So, July 17th and August 28th.
Great. Thank you.
So, I'm going to make a motion to adopt the PBD School Committee 2018-2019 calendar as written, with the exception of July, the meeting will be on July 17th.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
All right. Thank you.
Just future reference. I will put it on the agenda, but I'll be bringing forth some information about the Student Advisory Board, and it will probably impact on the immediate time.
Okay. Yeah, quick, I assume, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I assume we're maintaining the start time that we voted on, your recommendation.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Yeah. Does any, anyone want to come earlier? Start earlier?
Sure.
No? Okay. I heard 6:30.
AM?
PM.
Oh, we can do AM.
Well...
I think in fairness to the community, maybe seven o'clock is good at this point, and then down the road, if we have to address it, we can, but I think it's fair with traffic and all to get people home on time if they're watching on TV or...
And if we don't have a subcommittee, we always have subcommittee meetings before...
Very good. Written communications, we do not have any. Subcommittee reports, education?
The education for the 2017-18 school year is completed.
Except for all the reading we have.
Except for our...
Summer reading.
Finance, Ms. Carpenter?
Thank you. So, the finance subcommittee and the committee as a whole met in executive session this evening, and we have a couple of contracts before you that were voted in executive session, and we are bringing them forward to open session to have a vote. The first contract that I want to address is the contract for our administration, administrator of special education, Ruth Grooby. We have the contract before you that will begin the 1st of July 2018, and it runs through June 30th of 2020. That vote was taken in executive session. I'd like to make a motion in open session to accept the terms of said contract.
Second.
On the motion?
I'm going to recuse myself for just a minute.
Okay. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
All set? Good. The second contract that you have before you is the MOA for Unit A. I'm happy to report that we have finished and ratified the contract with Unit A. There were many hours and hurdles and obstacles, but overall, this was a very amicable, reasonable, and respectful negotiation, and I want to thank everyone that was involved on our side and Unit A's side. And with that being said, I'd like to make the motion to approve the MOA between the PBD School Committee and the PBD Federation of Teachers for the contract beginning August 31st, 2018, through August 31st, 2021.
Second.
On the motion, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to explain my vote on this, so that it's explained here and not elsewhere. First, before I do that, I would like to extend my gratitude to our negotiating team, yourself, Ms. Carpenter, Chair of that committee, Mr. Amico, Dr. Levine, Ms. Murtagh, Mr. Stanton, Mr. Farrell, I'm assuming participated, Mr. Khan, and also extend some gratitude to, the same gratitude, I should say, to the negotiating team for Unit A. I'm happy to hear that the negotiation was amicable and respectful, as it should be, and it's not always that way, so I'm happy to hear that that's the manner in which everyone conducted themselves. I cannot support this contract with regard to Unit A, because I think it goes too far in some certain provisions. It goes too far in some contractual provisions that may have been gives when there was an issue with regard to our budget, and specifically, taking two professional development days away from this unit and other staff members, and those items that we gave on, I think, would have been appropriate under those circumstances. But that's not what we have before us. What we have is, we have come up with funding to reinstate those two professional development days, which I think is highly appropriate. It's what we should have done if we were able to find the money, and the money was found, and that has taken place, and the budget was approved by the city council with that money in our budget to fund those two professional development days. But what happened after that money was found and those two days were reinstated is the items that, the language items, which, which we agreed we would give if the two professional development days were not in the contract, are still in the contract. So, we reinstated the two professional development days, and we gave not only language that I think, in the long run, negatively impacts the school committee and the taxpayer down the road, and also our future budgets, but we also gave on money. We gave on longevity bonuses to the point of significantly increasing those bonuses, and there's a philosophy, I guess, I don't understand it, that those longevity bonuses are at the discretion of the bargaining unit to distribute. I always looked at longevity bonuses as rewarding staff members who chose to stay in PBD, whether they were here for 20 years, or 30 years, or five years. But I don't think any staff members under 15 years of service are going to benefit from the longevity bonus, the generous longevity bonus increase that is in this contract. I think that's unfair to the membership. I'm not even sure the membership is aware of this. And we were here a few weeks ago, talking about the budget in a public session, and listening to a lot of staff members who are going to be negatively impacted by the loss of two professional development days, and there was no mention of the benefit that they were going to get in terms of the increase in the longevity bonus. And I think one of the reasons for that is most of the staff members, not most, some, some of the staff members we heard from still aren't going to benefit from these longevity bonuses, and I think that that's unfair. I think it's patently unfair of the leadership for Unit A to distribute the funds that this committee has negotiated in good faith in an inequitable manner. So, for those reasons and a few more, I don't want to get into the specifics of the language, because I'm hoping it doesn't hurt us in the future, so I don't want to put any, shed any more light on it than I'm aware of, and I talked to my fellow school committee members in executive session about. But for those reasons, I cannot support this contract. It is not an indictment on the members of Unit A. I think, as all of us do, that the staff that we have here in the PBD public school system, particularly the teachers in this case, but I think it also now encompasses library media specialists and a whole host of other members who used to be in a different unit that are now in this, that are now in this unit. It's not a reflection on their work, or their value, or how much I and the rest of us appreciate them. That's unlimited. They do a wonderful job on a daily basis. We're lucky to have them here with our children, and it's not a reflection on that at all. So, but I did want to explain my vote before it was given.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Anybody else? Ms. Dunn?
I'm going to vote in favor of this contract. I don't agree with everything, but I think it's a very fair contract. I actually want to thank the people who did all this work to bring the contract to completion, and I'd like people to know that over the past 30 years, there have only been two instances where the contract was settled prior to its expiration. The first one was Mr. Gravel, and had been 20 years before he was able to accomplish that, and that was always his goal, to do that, and he did that. After 20 years, the contract for the schools was settled prior to expiration. I think it happened once before since then. Actually, we're trying to find that out, so you can have a good, clear record on this. But the goal of the school committee was to have this settled. Many goals that we have discussed over the past few years have been accomplished with the language in this contract. Many of the objectives of this school committee have been accomplished with this contract, one of which is to bring the standing of the PBD School Department staff up. It used to be the lowest-paid staff around. We're up fairly modest, but in the middle, and that was important, and that's been a long-time project. It was difficult to get this settled. I'm very impressed with a lot of the different language in here that was cleaned up, because I know people have tried to do that for years, and some of it's been really very, very helpful. To Mr. Hockman's point, as far as longevity, that was handled the same way it normally is, where in negotiations, a specific amount is given, and the union has been allowed to make the determination of where that goes, and this reflects that. It's nothing out of the ordinary, and it's really nothing that we, we don't have to agree with it. The fact that you accomplished so much, and that our teachers are going to start the school year with a new contract, I know other contracts are reaching the end and are almost done, or are done, and are just waiting some final motions. That's impressive, and I really want to thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. You did a great job as the, as the finance chair and as the lead negotiator. Mr. Amico, Mr. Olympio, you guys were right there, and you did everything that we asked. And I also want to thank you, because you kept us apprised, as we went along, of all the different things that you were discussing. You came back to us, you took our input, you came back with answers, and I appreciated that, too. So, thank you. I know you did that with Dr. Levine and Ms. Murtagh, and the administrators, all the people that helped support this on our side, but it showed a good working relationship with the union, and I think that that, you can't quantify it, but it's very important. It's very important for our students, and that at the base is why we do this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Mr. Amico?
Thank you, Mr. Olympio. Through the chair to the committee, I do want to thank Ms. Carpenter for your leadership during that negotiations. It was so professional. You were outspoken, you were detailed, you came back to the membership here, the committee, with all the facts, but I just want to thank you for your leadership in that, because it's not an easy thing to chair a negotiations with the largest unit. And I also want to thank the teachers as well. They should fight for everything. They have a very difficult job. As an educator myself, I know how difficult it is. You're a parent, you're a friend, you're a teacher to these students, and wherever you teach, it's always hard, and it's a difficult job, and it's a job, unfortunately, still in this country, that doesn't give the credit to those that do it every day. And I think what we saw, even in this room here, when a lot of people came in here, it's a microcosm of this country. People feel as though teachers don't get what they deserve, and I'm proud of PBD teachers, I'm proud of the contract that we helped put together, and I'm proud that they'll start on, whenever that start date is, with a new superintendent who's very progressive. They're progressive, and I feel as though our kids, those of us who have kids in the district, are going to get a great education. So, I'm proud of being with the group with Ms. Carpenter, Ms. Olympio, your ability to crunch numbers, and I really appreciate your leadership in that as well. And Dr. Levine, Ms. Murtagh, and Mrs. Stanton, I know this is going to be your last go-around here as you're moving on, but I want to thank you for being there for us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amico, and stole some of my thunder, but Ms. Carpenter, your knowledge and experience were invaluable. Really appreciate, you were someone to lean on during the negotiations, and Mr. Amico, again, your education background really helped me out a lot, and Dr. Levine, Ms. Murtagh, and Mr. Stanton, just, it was a great team. It was a really, it was, you know, a tough situation at first, but we pulled through, and the teachers did a, you know, a great job sticking up for themselves, too, what they believed in, and I think everybody won. At the end of the day, I'm proud that we'll be hitting the ground running come September, and, you know, good things ahead. So, thank you. Anybody else on the motion? Mr. Arnotis?
I always, I always like to go last. I just want to give a big thank you to Mrs. Carpenter and the finance team and our great team here. My personal opinion on the contract is probably indicative of where I'm seated right now. is probably indicative of where I'm seated right now, somewhere in between what we just heard. But really, thank you to you guys for getting us through this. We have a, we had a great set of veterans up there matched with the experience that you folks have and your background, too. Thank you.
Believe, Ms. Carpenter?
I just want to respond to, I have to say, you know, thank you for the thank yous. But the team that we had was what really made it very well balanced. You know, we have Mr. Olimpio with the numbers, Dr. Levine, how many, a million years of experience, back and selfie. Ms. Murtagh's there, so she fully understands and is able to know what to expect and is ready to work with this contract. And Mr. Amico, we would always go, okay, so, you know, as a teacher. So it was a great team. And, and I really appreciate it. And on Unit A's side, they had a great team. They had a lot of experience. And, you know, we did have that huge hurdle. And it was unfortunate, but we worked through it. And, you know, the things that we were giving up in language to try to compensate for those two days, you know, we were doing our very best. And then when we were blessed with the money to put those, those two days back, well, we still were able to offer the things that we were trying to make up for the two days. So, you know, that was the rationale on that. I'm confident that this is a contract that we can work with, that everyone is satisfied with. Negotiations mean you kind of give a little and take a little and get a little. So, you know, I'm confident with this contract. And, and I'm happy that everyone's going to start the school year on the right foot. So, thank you all for your input as well.
All right, we have a motion. So roll call vote, please.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
No.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Is that all, Ms. Carpenter?
Yeah, I think that'll do it.
Wow.
All right, through the chair.
Yes.
Just to remind Mr. Amico, did you have a question on the calendar?
Oh, can I go, can I go back to that?
Sure.
So, there's a, and you'll have it in front of you, the first, is it orientation or meet the teacher night? I believe it's a holiday. The Jewish holiday starts the night before. And it's scheduled, so I think we're working on that.
It's got it changed, yes.
Perfect. Thank you. I don't know why, I just thought of it.
Otherwise, I won't be able to be there.
Thank you, Dr. Levine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. Athletics and wellness?
Nothing to report. I took up enough time.
Quality and standards?
Nothing to report tonight.
Liaison to city council and advisory board?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The parent advisory board met last Monday here at the Higgins. And it was really a wrap-up meeting with some plans for what we'd like to do for the beginning of next year. And some of the items that were discussed were the vandalism at the center school and concerns about the playground equipment. And actually, I offered some information to them about a possible solution for replacement of the, it's the slide. And also have referred some of those other issues concerning vandalism. And it goes for every school, but that will be at the safety committee, safety committee issues. And I explained to the parents that we're working on increasing safety and security at all the buildings. And that's going to take care of some of the problems. Couple of other things that came up that were very interesting were, parents were asking about redistricting. And they want to know about that. They'd like to see, you know, how that's going to unfold. And that one of the considerations of where people send their children is because of before and after school care. And that's something that they wanted to make sure that we kept in mind as we discuss redistricting. And they suggested perhaps bringing, bringing in another survey of parents as part of the redistricting process. And to use some of the questions that they, actually, parent advisory board had formulated those questions originally on the survey about before, after school care. So they thought that a couple of those might end up being worked into any type of a survey or discussion for redistricting. They also asked a couple of questions about making sure that communications consistently improve. They'd like to see some more information on the school website. And they also had a concern about the parent portal at the high school for reviewing grades, that the, it's not updated frequently or consistently. And what has been happening is some students right up until last week, the parents were very concerned because their student grades were not reflective of the actual grade. And they were, they were creating difficulties for students and for parents as far as getting an accurate understanding of, is their child doing well? Does the child need to catch up? You know, what's going on? They said it's very different than what they experienced at Higgins. So, other than that, we'll begin meeting again next fall. And they were enthused about also helping to increase and basically restart the citywide PTO. They want, they want to do that. And, sorry, one other thing. We're still looking into the issue of the insurance for the PTOs to see where, where they may be able to save some money. The figures for the insurance that they're paying for, they're all over the board. So they were trying to figure out, are they all getting the same coverage? Is one school saving money and another school spending money that, you know, they want to try to be equitable and see what they actually have to have. So those are the issues that will be coming forward. And some, some folks are not going to return, which was really, you know, sad. We know they'll come back. But it was a very nice meeting, very, very small. And typical end of the season. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn, for that report. Building, building and grounds?
Nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
And we had a safety subcommittee meeting at 5:30 today. And we met with the chief of police and just went over our safety protocols with the chief of police. Special education parent advisory board will be starting that back up again in September. I look forward to it. See any new business? Ms. Carpenter?
Thank you. Dr. Levine, is this your last meeting with us?
This is my last meeting.
I know how much you're going to miss us. And I just want to say, for your last meeting, I want to thank you for your time, your dedication, your knowledge. You have been a wealth of information. Every single question that I could throw at you, you had an answer. You made it up sometimes, but you had an answer. I want to thank you for helping us out for so long, for being the best interim superintendent we've ever had. And I want to thank you for your friendship. And I will miss you immensely. And I want you to really retire and relax now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dunn?
I'll, you can go right down the road.
Okay, yeah, well, Jill?
Through the chair, Dr. Levine, I just want to thank you for, for all you did. When I first ran into you, you were a interim principal at the center school. A lot of people don't remember that. But I remember one of my kids, I forget, it was either my daughter or my son coming home saying, "We've got this new principal and he's really funny." And I thought that was really cool. And she didn't know what your name was. She just said, "He has a big smile and he was really funny." So I remember coming in the next day and picking them up. And I reintroduced myself to you from our, from our past. And I just want to thank you for all that you've done for the city of Peebody. You really bleed blue. And you love this city. And this is why you do some of the things you do. But I, most of all, your brutal honesty, which is, which is awesome. To be in a position that you were in, where you could just say what's on your mind and always put kids first, that's something that every person should be in a position to do. But you did it great. So I just want to say thank you for doing what you did.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I'll, Dr. Levine, thank you. I just appreciate everything that I've learned from you. I appreciate your knowledge, your wisdom. More importantly, too, your bedside manner. You're dealing with parents that are very emotional with their children and just have a nice way of putting people at ease, even if they may not agree with the decision or the outcome. But I really do appreciate how, the compassion that you show and the understanding. And just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. Herb, you're, you're the true epitome of a leader. You've groomed your replacement, not only for the next superintendent in Peebody, but you've groomed special education director, business managers. We got to see a whole lot about Herb Levine by the people that you introduced us to over the time that you've been here. Quality people, highly qualified people who came back from their retirement to assist in times of need for this school district. It's a testament to you and who you are and how you treat people. And I know that you preach to be kind to people. But not only do you preach it, you practice it. It's, it's one of your greatest qualities. Your experience is immeasurable. Your compassion for students, for staff members, but mostly for those that don't have for themselves is wonderful. You talk to your retirement party about your parents and the values that they instilled upon you. And it's evident. They, they are proud. They should be proud. And you're not going to miss me because I'm moving into Joel's bedroom.
Well said, Mr. Hockman. Mr. Arnotis?
Yes. Well, in my six months coming in, I know you're on your way out, so we didn't get to spend too much time together here. But having known you a little bit before I got here, something that has always stuck with me, whether it's a room, you know, an executive session, or a room of a thousand people, something you always say isn't as simple as it is. It's about the kids. And I, I have always, I can picture you saying that when you do. You go, "It's about the kids." And you have always been consistent with that. And I think, at least the impression I've always gotten, and I think everyone out there probably sees it, too, that that has been your guiding light from start to finish, that you always run towards that. And at the end of the day, that's the question you seem to always ask. Are these kids better off than they were when you make that decision? So thank you for that. We're lucky to have you. We're going to be missing you, I'm sure. But I think without a doubt here, Kara is going to carry that on. And thank you.
Thank you. Well said, Mr. Arnotis. And Ms. Dunn?
Thank you. Dr. Levine, saying goodbye is not going to be easy. You have, at your heart, you're a teacher. So everything you have done has been to teach. You have taught us all how to be a good leader. You've always accepted responsibility for any decision you've made. You've listened. You've taken input. And at times, you have changed your decision and, and told us why. And that meant a lot. On many occasions, you've taught us, taught me to be kind. Taught us all how to communicate. The communication has been wonderful. Taught us to see the humor in things such as snow days, and to always extend respect to everyone. Those are important lessons. Even as adults, we can always learn from someone. And it's great to learn from a good teacher. So, thank you. I do hope you come back to visit. We know you'll be watching TV every couple of Tuesdays. And I thank you so much for leaving us in good shape with excellent administrators. We have a new superintendent who's coming in and is going to be someone who learned from you. And we're going to have a lot of chances to keep hearing you in the back of our head when we take a vote, do what's right.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
If I may?
Yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Levine?
I'll, I'll be short, I hope. To the community, it's been an honor to lead the school system. And thank you to everybody, parents, the greater community, coworkers, teachers, and everybody that I've dealt with for welcoming, welcoming me and allowing me to be a success because of you. To the school committee, it's an honor and a privilege to work with people who work hard, who are bright, who always want to do what's good and right for kids. But more importantly, who are the terrific human beings that I know you to be. Everything that we do here, whether it be on television or personally in our lives and throughout the community, we are role models and people watch. And you never, ever have to hang your head because you are always the right role model at the right time and the right place. And that's important for kids to understand that the leaders in the community, very busy with your own lives, take this job so seriously and always do the right thing. In the four years that I've been here with this school committee and some members of the school committee who are no longer on the school committee but are on the city council, I have never walked away from one single person at this table or at the table before you and had to question whether or not what you said to me to my face was what you were going to say and believe to the public. Never once, ever. The whole foundation, and I talked about this at my retirement party, that you were so kind to come to, the most significant, I think, the most significant piece of any foundation for any relationship is trust. If you can't trust people, it's really hard to be productive in a relationship. There isn't a person at this table that I don't trust. So, thank you for being, most significantly, the good human beings that you are. The really good people. All the things that you've said about me, and I thank you for that, right back at you. You are kind, decent people. And this community is lucky that they have people working so hard to make so many difficult decisions, always keeping children in mind as their number one priority. This community is also going to be lucky to have Kara Murtagh as its next superintendent. She will be successful. She will transition in with a great team of equally dedicated and talented people around her. We have a fabulous principal team. And this community is going to continue to move forward with the partnership that we've established across the board. Jared, I wish you well. You've been a wonderful addition to our team. You've accepted a job that anybody would have to accept at your stage of life. And keep in touch with us. You've done a great job for us, worked very hard for us. And I know you're going to be successful wherever you go. I did want to mention somebody who's not here, and that's the mayor. Many, many times in, in making decisions and trying to figure things out, in good times and in bad, private meetings with the mayor have been significant for me. This is a man who makes things happen, whether it be for the city or the school department or in his personal life. He's a tremendous leader. And he's thoughtful. And he thinks very carefully about decisions that he makes. I want to thank the mayor from the bottom of my heart for making sure that we could do the things that we needed to do for kids. And when things got tough, and when we were between a rock and a hard place, he came through in ways that he didn't have to, for all of us. So, you talk about one of the finest human beings that I know. Mayor Ted Betancourt fits that category. And I want to thank him for all of his partnership, all of his leadership, all of his kindness, and all of his decency in, in leading this city. So, I will miss this. And I'll be thinking about you Monday as I am on my chair at the pool reading a book. I haven't read a book for pleasure in four years. And it's the first thing I'm going to do. And then on Tuesday, when I go for my saxophone lessons, I'll be thinking about you.
More than neighbors.
And I will be playing with my grandchildren a lot. But I'll take the month of July off. And then, I don't know. We'll see what happens. I, I might get nervous in my shoes. So, we'll see. But I promise you, I'm taking the month of July off. This has been a great run. I think we've done some great things. You're a great bunch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for a great meeting and...
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.